Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the July 25th, 2023 Board of Education Meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is 7:08 PM. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of the meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth of the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Verona Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Sure. Mr. Walker?
President.
Mrs. Frizzell?
Here.
Mrs. Farrar?
Here.
Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Freshing?
Here.
We have Korn. Thank you.
Thank you. Up first, we have a presentation tonight. I would like to call up Verona High School Extended School Year Program.
Thank you for doing this.
Hello? Okay. Hi, thank you. My name is Kathy Thomas and I am the Speech Language Teacher at the Middle School and the High School in Verona. And I'm here tonight with my colleagues Derek Filano and Megan Shaw, Valerie Sache, Christina Garson, Karen Tully, Amelia Griffiths, Betty Ho, and Fran Lambroschino. I think I got everybody right. So we just want to say thank you so much for inviting us here to talk about the activities that we worked on with our students this summer. We're really, really grateful. So first, we want to just say thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you to Diane Di Giuseppe, to Tanya Simmons. Thank you to Karen Tully for giving us, you know, the opportunity and the resources to put our ideas into practice. So we're very grateful for that. The idea to infuse life skills into our summer program came from a little rumor that we heard that we might have a life skills program at the high school. And we really were excited about that. And coincidentally, at the same time, VFE had granted some of us, the Verona Fund for Educational Excellence, had granted us boxes, flower boxes, raised flower beds. And we decided to plant vegetables in them that corresponded to the foreign languages taught at the high school. So now we have a box of vegetables that correspond to French cooking and Spanish and Latin American cooking and Chinese cooking. And the foreign language teachers very kindly agreed to come and do lessons with our students this summer, multicultural, multi-sensory lessons, where, you know, students had an opportunity to make arepas, you know, with the Spanish and Latin American culture and Ratatouille for the French culture and dumplings for the Chinese culture. And it was a really amazing experience, also because, you know, as colleagues, we don't always get to collaborate. So it was really nice to have this cross-curriculum opportunity. And it was also multi-sensory. And just like a garden, ideas grow. And so with this, our ideas grew more. Amelia Griffiths and Megan Shaw thought, well, we have these other wonderful boxes, but could we have an American box? Could we plant some vegetables reflecting American culture? So we planted corn and they planted watermelon and green beans. And then they came up with some more lessons on making pesto and making applesauce and tea bags. So it was a really amazing experience for all of us. And then we thought it kept growing. So we thought, what about a activity where kids can put math skills and communication skills to use in a real functional activity? So we created a plant sale. And I first want to say thank you so much to Hillcrest Farms for donating over 60 plants and our colleague Diane Conboy, who donated, I think, another 20 plants. So it was an amazing experience where students were involved in every aspect of the plant sale. They were involved in making change, in creating invoices, in the setup and the breakdown of the sale. And at the end of the sale, we had the opportunity, Megan, Derek, and I, the teachers and the speech pathologists, to get together with the students and help them calculate their profit, which was extraordinary. So they had, they got to figure out what they made, which actually is a great segue into saying what we used the profit for. The students financed their own field trip. We had a community-based instructional field trip where they got to go out in the community and they got, they had a walking trip. They went to Hillcrest Farms and they purchased a plant independently, communication, using their own money that we provided them with, making change, and then going to Town Scoop and buying an ice cream, which was, they were really looking forward to that. And I have to say extreme thank you to Town Scoop, who opened an hour early for us, which was very kind of them. And on that field trip, the day began and ended at the Verona Community Garden. So the beginning of the day, we had retired teacher Carol Thomas kindly volunteer to engage the students in this experience of gardening and picking vegetables and just, you know, having that whole wonderful experience. And then I, Kathy Thomas, not related, talked to the students about pollinators. And we stood in front of our VFE-funded butterfly garden. So it was really amazing. And at the end of the day, the students were able to come back to the garden and recap their adventurous day over a pizza lunch and, you know, have some conversational skill practice. So I want to say thank you to all of my extraordinary colleagues who participated in this. But in addition to the folks that are here today, if you have a chance to look at the end of the slideshow, there were so many people involved in today, administrative assistants, custodians who brought boxes over, teachers who just maintained the garden all year long, so we had a summer garden. So thank you so much to everybody. Thank you to all of you. And I'd like to now turn this over to Derek Filano.
Thank you, Thomas. So in building off these ideas on life skills-based instruction and on especially speech-based instruction and communication focus, one of the biggest focuses in my classroom throughout the summer has been our morning meeting activity, which is where myself and the students, we created this very, my focus was on authentic and comfortable environments where they could communicate, not just with me, but with their peers, their emotional thoughts, their experiences, the plans that they already had. So we would have conversations like, what'd you do yesterday? What are you doing today? What are you doing later? Not just broaching those conversations, but also then working on the logistical and executive functioning skills that become important through conversations like that. And for me, it was all about the emotional connection, the genuine kind of comfort and authenticity that came with that, creating those kind of engaging communication and speech pathways for the students. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. Kathy, especially. Thank you so much to you. So the HBW students, of course, also participated in the summer program as well. And I feel like we had a great start. What we did right from the beginning is we looked at 10 different really great garden quotes. And the students actually chose their most favorite garden quote. And the quote rang true throughout the entire program, which was, "A garden is a friend you can visit anytime." And that is very much true, because we built it into our program so that not only did we plant seeds, and what are those seeds? And eventually, we will harvest them, the corn in October, basically, because it's not quite ready, because it was from seed. But it really kind of established the day for us. We worked around this whole gardening theme in every, in every way imaginable when it came to curriculum. So in the American garden box, Mrs. G, I have to thank so much for her help. She did an amazing job. We included corn, carrots, string beans, and watermelon. And it was just incredible to see how, just from a seed planted by these kids, how they sprouted in a matter of weeks. I mean, they're just gigantic at this point, you know, the American box. And so I think that's what the kids loved the most, seeing that, the fruit of their labor, really, at the end of the day. What we did, though, of course, is we supported the theme of gardening, with our reading and our writing curriculum. We read a lot of real-life stories about growing up on a farm that the kids felt like related to. We also read a lot of books, mainly read a lot of books about gardening, even a story about certain species and how they can affect growing. We touched on the Irish Potato Famine and how fungus absolutely decimated those crops and how that could potentially happen. Mrs. G, our paraprofessional, also read the children a story about lanternflies, which, of course, they were all very familiar with and knew about, and were excited by. For math, we incorporated a lot, again, with our garden theme. We used a conversion chart, because when we were planting and when we were thinking about where to plant, we had to use a conversion chart. And I think that that was something that they really enjoyed and that they'll remember. We made herbal tea. We also made applesauce. Mrs. G took it upon herself to bring in her very own basil and made an amazing pesto to keep with the theme. But again, I think the summer, the way that it started with analyzing these great quotes, it really, it really rung through throughout the entire program. And again, I mean, I think that these kids, at the end of the day, can turn to gardening and can see that it absolutely is a friend that you can turn to at any time. So just, again, thank you so much. We really did appreciate our time and we look forward to next year, having another amazing experience. So thank you so much to everybody.
Just want to bring up, just for one second, our foreign language teachers, just for one second, just to say hi. Valerie Sache, Christina Garson, and we have Betty Ho. And, you know, they were part of the magic of the summer. So we thank you so much.
The opportunity, and as we were discussing, we find our students across all the levels and all the different populations we teach find opportunities to learn about culture through food, really engaging. So thank you for the opportunity to continue exploring it.
I enjoyed it. I'm sorry. I enjoyed it so very much. And the whole program is very creative and very educational, plus very fun. I got to meet so many different kids and work with coworkers, which is a very unique setting. Very much. Thank you.
Tell you, the halls of VHS never smelled any better. You could see, like, three hallways away. What's that? Thank you so much.
And thank you for posting it on social media. I was a big fan and I was watching this unfold and saw all the different meals. I mean, this is incredible. So, you know, kudos to you and the students who participated. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you all so much for being here. Want to say a special thank you to the team. As you guys know, we really want to develop the life skills program for the high school. And what this team was able to do in a few short weeks was incredible. When the room is going to be ready, we know that the possibilities are really going to be endless. So I really want to thank everybody, especially Kathy Thomas. She's super humble, but she is the mastermind behind all these ideas and getting everybody engaged and together. When I had talked to Kathy last week about doing a little presentation so you guys could see what's been going on, she's like, I have to bring the whole team. It's not about me, it's about the team. And she's 110% correct. So just want to thank Kathy and the whole team for making all of this possible. And Karen for coordinating all the ESMY and all of our teachers for being part of it in Paris. It was great to get to know the kids a little bit on a different level. So thank you to the board and to Diane for all your support. We appreciate it.
I was going to add just a little comment. Just like thinking of the students and doing these life skills. And I don't know how much our guidance department is familiar, but there's like a lot of working colleges that value the life skills. And one of my own sons went to a college where a job on campus that offset tuition, and they actually had a full working farm that fed their cafeteria. So this just like, to me, spoke volumes of these skills are so transferable to the real world when they get beyond our high school. So it's invaluable, this program. I look forward to seeing it grow. No pun intended.
Yeah, guys, thank you for coming. This is a treat to see. It was uplifting as well. And thanks for, you know, coming here tonight. You didn't have to do that to show us, but you guys did. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just, I'm so happy that we're going to be offering up the life skills program and to see your passion and the work that you've been doing just made my night. Thank you.
Yes, kudos to you guys. And thank you for all your hard work and dedication throughout the year. You guys are very much appreciated. I know sometimes it goes unknown, but you are very much appreciated in all, everything you all do for our students. So thank you. And thank you for bringing this and making this, it's going to be great. So thank you all. Appreciate it. On our agenda, we have our superintendent report, Mrs. Di Giuseppe.
Good evening. I do want to just tail on that the food that was produced there was high quality and just delish. So I missed the dumpling day and I love dumplings. And I know Mrs. Ho made some great dumplings. So next year, I'm coming to the dumpling day. Yeah. I also want to welcome Joe Berducci on his first board meeting as a tech in Eltiana is at home with his little one. Just an update on the demographic report presentation by Dr. Grip. Something came up for tonight. He couldn't be here this evening. I did know in between our two meetings. And he is going to be away over our August meetings. He will be here on September 12th to do the presentation. We have Charlene Peterson coming to us in August. So we'll, we'll be looking a little more deeply into the strategic plan and the first draft of the action plan. Just an update on staffing. You can see by our agenda this evening, we've been very, very busy finding people for positions that were open. When we last left, there were several positions that had not yet been filled. So with regard to the only administrative position, which is the leave replacement, ELA supervisor for Mrs. Peters maternity leave, we did hire a retired, newly retired, not quite yet retired, retired as of September 1, principal from West Orange, who is a former principal here in Verona. So she's known to Verona, she's known to our, most of our administrative staff and many of our teachers. We had a new kindergarten position that had just recently been advertised. We had just started interviewing. At the last meeting, we hired a kindergarten teacher, a leave replacement for grade one at Lanning. Unfortunately, the special education self-contained at Lanning, we are back to the drawing board because we had someone who took the job and then didn't take the job. So we're back to the drawing board on that one. That's a hard one. We had some resignations in the meantime. We did hire a special education English teacher at HBW. We had a math teacher, a science teacher, and a grade five special ed math teacher all resign over the past month or so. And we have found replacements for all of them. We hired our special, our social studies teacher at the high school. And we had a recent resignation of our learning disabilities teacher consultant at the high school. And we were able to hire someone for that position as well. So currently, we have one position that is unfilled. And we expect to be able to fill that. We still have, you know, I don't want to jinx, no one jinx this, but we still have a month to get that filled. Last year, at this time, I was interviewing, not this time, last year, mid-August, I was interviewing people on Zoom from, from Florida. So I feel good about the fact that we have basically a full complement of staff right now. On the agenda tonight, there's a graduation report, which is a really easy one this year, since the state did suspend any of the graduation assessment requirements. So that report, I'm sure you remember from the past, just tells us how many students graduated, how many graduated through a traditional passing of an assessment, how many would, you know, graduate with a state-issued diploma based on a portfolio or an alternative assessment, and how many were denied graduation and why. So for this year, we had 149 students, which included one of our out-of-district placed seniors who graduated. Again, due to the suspension of the graduation assessment, everyone graduated based on rent, our own credit requirements, attendance requirements, and any of our local graduation requirements. And we had one student who was denied graduation due to attendance and subsequent loss of credit. So one student did not graduate. Also, on the agenda tonight, I recently applied for a Trees for School grant, which is put forth by Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative via Sustainable New Jersey. And Verona Township is a sustainable community and has a connection with Sustainable New Jersey. So we are asking to add 45 trees to the Verona area, including all six schools, the Civic Center, and two parks in town. The reason for this grant is twofold, or actually, it's ecological as well as educational. So New Jersey has recently recognized the critical importance of reducing greenhouse gas emission to combat climate change. And in addition, the need for increased awareness of climate change through a more targeted curriculum. New Jersey recently released a report, New Jersey's Global Warming Response Act 80 by 50, it's called. And what that means is New Jersey is looking to reduce emissions 80% by 2050. It's a very lofty ideal. But part of that has to do with planting as many trees as we can. Our project here in, in Verona aligns directly with the objectives by focusing on, on implementing effective measures to mitigate carbon at the local level. The state of New Jersey recently doubled down on, on its focus on climate change with the adoption of the 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards. New Jersey became the first of the state in the nation to include climate change across all content areas. These standards are designed to prepare students to understand how and why climate change happens and its impact on our local and global communities and to act in an informed, sustainable way. So we do know that urban and community forests contribute to demand-side energy reductions by providing shade, reducing the need for air conditioning, avoiding emissions, avoided emissions, I'm sorry, and they are among the top five in carbon gain potential for natural climate solutions. So in addition to that, there's a bunch of studies that show that the benefits of urban trees extend beyond carbons, carbon removal from the atmosphere. They increase biodiversity, they reduce noise pollution, they improve stormwater management, and they increase property values. So our project aims to establish tree planting of 45 trees distributed across, as I said, the school campuses, Verona Civic Center, and by some parks across the community by involving students directly and promoting sustainability. We intend to enhance their understanding of climate change, instill a sense of environmental stewardship, and inspire them to become active participants. So our goal for four of the trees, I'm sorry, five of the trees, those four at our elementary schools and at HBW is the kindergartens at the elementaries will be involved on Arbor Day to, in the planting of the tree and the naming of the tree. And then we hope to get those kids out every year until they're seniors and take a picture with the tree. And the same with the fifth graders. We also will have lessons surrounding Arbor Day and climate change and, and what they're doing to play their role in reducing global climate through carbon removal. So the grant is actually a $65,890 grant. We are hoping that we are going to be recipients of that. We won't know probably until the end of the summer, mid-fall. I do also want to shout, shout out Carol Thomas. Tonight's getting a lot of press. Shout out to Carol, because Carol was instrumental in bringing this grant to my attention, as well as assisting me in writing the grant. She actually did the planting plan. She is on the Verona Shade Tree Commission. And I really appreciated, A, her bringing the grant to my, my attention and any help that she provided. I appreciate all of that. So I do also want to thank everyone that was involved in VC Splash and ESMY, because their programs all conclude tomorrow. And Verona Summer Music, whose program concluded earlier, late last week, I believe. And I just need to give a shout out to potentially the best school performance I have ever seen, Beauty and the Beast, in 15 days, with probably 100 kids from, you know, early elementary, straight through early high school. It was a tremendous performance. The costumes were incredible, the set design was incredible, light, sound, acting, singing, dancing, you, you name it. It was, I couldn't say, I was, couldn't say enough about it. You know what? I started filming, because I'm like, oh, I'm not supposed to film, but I have to show my husband this. This is never going to believe how good this is. So it was really phenomenal. And just so proud of, of what our teachers do with our kids. And I know Verona Summer Music is not officially a Verona School District function, but it's our teachers and our kids and our parents. And it is really amazing. And kudos to them. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Let me just ask a quick question about the trees. And you may not know, and I don't, do we know if they're going to be native species?
I do know.
Actually, I actually do know. There is a list of trees that, that are native to the area and trees that we cannot choose as a result of their, their being invasive, invasive exotics or outcompeting other, other trees. And it's a mix of, you don't have the planting plan. Can you just take a quick peek? It is, like, I'm sorry, it's 10 small. I can't even read it. It's so tiny. It really, I don't even know why this printed on one page. I apologize. It's 10 small, I think 20 medium and 22 large. So large is like a, like a six, six and a half foot, seven foot tree. That's pretty established, a ball tree. But they all will be on, from the approved list. And I can send it forward out what that list is, so you can see the choices.
So that, that would be amazing, 65,000. Is that money able to be spent towards educational programs around the standards? Or is it just for the trees?
So, good question. The budget is, the allowable budget, allowable budget was for purchase of the trees, the, any soil prep that would need to be done, any removal of concrete or other trees, if there, if there's a dying tree or dead tree. And then the care of, the care and watering of the tree for a year. We need to, we need to, like, promote that we're not going to plant these trees and walk away, and they're going to die. So we needed to, to put together a budget that was going to support the longstanding survival of the trees. And then pruning, fertilizing, and they use natural, it's natural fertilizers. Yeah. So they actually inoculate the soil with a mycorrhizal fungus that it works symbiotically with the roots of the tree to make sure that they are sustainable. But none of it was for the education piece. It's all for the trees. Trees for school. The name says it all. But I think the idea of, we haven't done anything for Arbor, is talking to some of the principals. We really haven't done anything for Arbor Day in a while here. And it really does provide a sense of ownership of, of that tree. And, and I can imagine, you know, going back as a senior graduating high school to the, and getting a picture around the tree that you planted when you were in kindergarten. It's just, I don't know, maybe I'm a sap. No pun intended.
Thank you. Onto our board secretary report by
Onto our board secretary report by Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a safe and wonderful summer, although we're in our summer session academically. It's definitely extremely busy in the board office as also for the business office and buildings and grounds as the teams actually are hard at work preparing our school buildings for the first day back to a new amazing school year. Also, our business team is currently closing out the fiscal twenty three school year and preparing for our annual audit this fall. In finance, in tonight's agenda, we do have our May Secretary Treasurers and Transfer Report next month. Those reports are all in agreement. Next month, we'll be closing out the year on on the August agenda. We will have the June thirtieth reports to report out there. In tonight's agenda, we also have a resolution to authorize an additional new benefit for our employees. That's one thing that I'm really excited about to offer to our Verona staff. This resolution expands our retirement plan offering to includes four fifty seven B plans to our employees. The 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 four fifty seven B plans is going to be an extent of of a menu of five providers. This tax shelter retirement plan is in addition to our four oh three B plans, giving our employees an option to contribute an additional twenty two thousand five hundred dollars. So this is in addition to the max that they already have in the four three Bs and or thirty thousand dollars for those who actually qualify for the catch up contribution. So that's an additional thirty. So technically, they could do up to sixty thousand dollars if they qualify for the catch up and in those two plans. Lastly, I would like to highlight our second annual Verona Wellness Day, and that's going to be held on Friday, September twenty second. After we come back in in this September, where our staff will have access to health screening and additional resources from our health carrier. So we're really excited about that. And this concludes my report for tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cruz, does anyone have any questions? We're going to move on to our student representative report. Ms. Chado.
So schools are in summer session, so not much on my end. Some sports are in their pre season, some sports, tennis, soccer, cross country are in their preseasons. Yeah, besides that, back in session in September, September fifth, I believe. Yeah, that's all from me tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Being here tonight. Yeah. We're going to move on to our committee reports. First up would be athletics. Mr. Walker, would you mind reporting on that since I was not at the meeting for that one? Thank you.
Sure. So I guess the the first and pretty big issue is that an inspection was done in the facilities and I guess you call the the booth or the the coaches booth, the press box area that didn't pass the inspection. So it's going to take, you know, it's expected that they should have it fixed before the season's over. But that's also where the the audio and the music comes from for the the various group that use that need that during the the football game. So Laura tells us that she's looking into contractors to to put the audio on the other locations nearby the football stadium so that those groups can still perform, but that is really unfortunate. I'm sure it must impact the coaching as well or the structure, but you know, sometimes challenges happen. So that is what it is. As Reese mentioned, we see our, you know, the the fall athletes are beginning to play. So that's good. And, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing the kids out there when the competition starts and, you know, I'm also looking forward to making sure all the stats get put in, you know, at the same time. So I was made, I was told that was something that will be a priority that will be worked on. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Next, we'll move on to governance and policy. You got that because we are approving.
So we met on July twelfth and the following policies were reviewed. So fifty one oh seven, which was plagiarism and use of artificial intelligence tools. There were basic language changes that were made and the use of artificial intelligence are detailed within that policy. And the committee is recommending that it become two separate policies, one for plagiarism and one for AI. And it's also recommended that we will be that the board should consider abolishing regulation that goes with fifty seven oh one because it was redundant with what was in the policy. Twenty four nineteen is school threat assessment teams. It's a mandatory policy. And although it's mandatory, the recommended policy is going to be temporary until it actually passes into law, which should be coming in the coming months. And then at that time, we'll revisit that policy and make any changes that are relevant to our own district. Right now, the version that we were discussing is just a generic version from our Strauss S May. The next one was forty two eighteen, and that is a name change. The old name is substance abuse and it's being changed to use possession or distribution of substances. That also is mandatory. And we're adding a regulation to forty two eighteen that would define the terms and procedures around that. Forty one sixty is physical examination, also mandatory, and it's being recommended that sections I and J will be stricken from the policy, which is the review and assessment of the exam results and also policy thirty one sixty, which is pertaining to the teaching staff, adding drug screening to make it consistent with what the support staff policy already says.
On that policy, we're also recommending in section E one F, if you go through the policy, there's an option that the school district shall or may refuse to hire a candidate based on a test result. And then this action shall or may be taken, even if the candidate claims he is recently, he or she has recently stopped using illegal drugs. We're recommending that it's a may instead of a shall. That way it gives the potential candidate the opportunity to present evidence that they were using something that was prescribed.
Yeah. So I just want to point out too that currently the drug test language is not in the policy. It will be in for second reading. I wanted to make sure that we had a facility that could test for us prior to putting into a policy because if we don't have a facility that can actually do the testing and we're requiring it. So I'm in, I'm hunting for a facility that I think yeah, we'll do that for us. I just want to make sure that they that they'll include that before we put into our policy. But that was very, that's an easy add back in for second reading.
Then lastly, policy fifty five fourteen, which is student vehicle use. So currently, we have a lot of students at the elementary school who apparently ride their bicycles to school. And there's no place to put the bicycles because technically they shouldn't be riding bicycles to school. So we're recommending at the next policy review batch that we do that we revise that language to allow the elementary school students to ride their bicycles and that would give the principals permission to in turn get bicycle racks for the students, keep it all safe. And that was all I had to.
We actually had a policy banning kids riding bicycles.
From the elementary, any vehicle. Yeah. So I I do want to give like a small shout out, and I probably should have let Mrs. Studo and mom and dad of course, to know that I was going to do this. But Noah Corsicone from Brookdale was principal of the day and wrote me a very, very detailed, very articulate email of why they should be able to ride their bicycles to school. So he was instrumental in bringing this to my attention and we're going to hopefully pass this policy and get some bike racks so the kids' bikes aren't laying in the in the dirt.
It's not contraband anymore.
One more about the, I think, which is important this board understands. So the AI policy that was recommended, that's that's not a policy that's recommended by Strauss S band. It's not a policy that state mandated. This was something that our superintendent decided to be one of the the first or one of the first in the state to look to to make an official policy. So you know, I commend you for the bravery for jumping on this wild west of, you know, technology. But for board members, I think we should be very much understanding that we have to change that policy very often over the next couple of years. Once we figure out how heck this this thing works.
Catch up to.
And I think the reasoning behind the need for that is there's there's a lot of articles currently that's urging school boards and universities to have a policy on what is AI? How do you use it appropriately and how is it inappropriately used? Because until we explain to students and parents and teachers what is appropriate use of artificial intelligence, I guess the most common one is chat GTP, GPT, GPT, which, by the way, I want to point out, I used in generating the beginning of the policy. It's an interesting program. If you've not played with it, play with it. There's great, there is great opportunities to use it with students, and I think we need to show our teachers how because this isn't going away. This is going to be part of their lives. And we need to show students how to use it appropriately. So as part of their education. But I do think we needed one sooner than later so that we're not penalizing kids for plagiarism, that they're not sure what that means when you're talking about something that's not alive doesn't have a citation because it's not of intellectual property. So it's a really gray area, and I do agree with Mr. Walker that it will change often as we learn how it's used and how new models are coming out, right? When I first started using chat GPT, it was one large language model. Now there's one for audio and there's one for digital or visual, like pictures and paintings, et cetera. So it's growing. Google has one. There's a ton now that are out there and right now many of them are free. Chat GPT is not free anymore. I think you can try to get on it. It's very hard to get on if you don't pay the twenty dollars a month. But there's, there's a lot in the policy. So if you haven't read through it, there's stuff about equity equity and access to it and and really making sure that we are covering all of our bases.
And you, yeah, for for writing this policy. Thank you. And I'm proud of us as a district for having this because it's so important. I hope that we're able to find opportunities for development. Ms. Razzella, I know you mentioned this up with teachers, but also for students and parents. Because I think as parents, we come from a completely different place. If you're not familiar with this at all. So I think to also support our parents in ways that they can support their children to really understand how this works, I think would really just be beneficial around.
Like to do is offer like a parent evening, showing parents what it is, how it can be used and how it can be misused.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, but I I don't see on here. I think buildings and grounds.
Yeah, Matt, didn't you?
Oh, good. All right. I don't have it on on.
No, it's not on the second evening. There's education. So I'll just because I think everybody, right?
Oh, okay, great.
No, okay. So buildings and grounds, you met? Buildings and grounds.
Yeah. So Jorge helped me out where I forgot anything, but I know that there was a big cleaning training day for the custodians that I mean, like, I think it's a really good thing they did that. I know that Jorge, that Jorge, but our buildings and grounds facilities director brought in someone that was a go, was it full day training session or something like that for district wide? And as I walked by, I saw two of the chariot cleaners parked out there, but I found that we have five new of those chariots where they walk on and clean the floors, the Zamboni. So that's a good thing. We got an update, the the egress routes for like the safety. So even if it's if we're renting the place out or giving to the local boy scouts or something like that, everyone should be able to look on the wall and know exactly, you know, where the exits are, where the the hard AED monitors are and things like that. So that's a good safety thing we're doing. I know that it's summertime, such a big time for the custodians to to kind of get the school ready, but it's a little harder because there's so many summer programs going on the first part of the year, first part of the summer. So now I think we're going to see a transition to getting a lot more of the the classrooms, you know, prepped and ready in the next couple of weeks. You know, because we have, it it's important that the curb appeal looks really good at our school, especially when the kids come in first day, teachers come in, you know, for their first training days. We want everything to look as crisp as possible. So they're going to be working hard and we appreciate that. And Cory Hicks, explain this to me, to the board, just the idea. We talked about the number of personnel and there there might be a need to hire one more custodian. I believe you said it was an elementary, but if you could kind of clear that up.
Yes, sure. So one of the updates in facility was also a time study of the district. And the gentleman B and G's solutions, he he basically shared out in a very in-depth report. Also, a lot of times we look at square footage and think, okay, the building is just square footage, but it's also the use of of the building. So at elementary schools, there might be a lot more need for cleaning compared to upper grades, et cetera. So that was one of the findings in the study and looking at a school like Lanning that has currently has two custodians. They actually are in a deficit of of a half position to support the the kind of cleaning that we want in the district. So we we have already made certain shift organically in the process as we were doing this. We do have one member in the custodian from Forest. He's actually moving to maintenance. So now we have a total of five maintenance staff in the district. This will now allow the district to better fill any daily absences and et cetera with the maintenance staff just to plug them in and not have basically a deficit of a custodian not being present during the during the school day. The the other piece was we expanded an additional position, which now gives us room to. We used to have a position called a floater and that floater is now part of the evening staff. So the deficit that we were seeing in the elementary schools, that person now could actually be added to the four elementary schools in the evening and support that the need for additional cleaning that that's needed there. So on paper, we're we're still down to one. I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying, yes, let's push for an additional one. But I think right now we're up one more than we had last school year. So I think we're going to see how this goes now. It's going to definitely be a lot better. We we actually have better products to actually be more efficient in our cleaning. We also switch our cleaning products. So that product will, we will see a difference with the actual clean product that we're using. And I definitely want to assess how this school year goes, and I think we'll we'll definitely see a big shift in the quality of the clean that we'll see.
Thank you for paying more attention than I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto finance. We met.
Okay, so Mr. Cruz touched upon much of what we discussed at our finance meeting. I think there were two things that we also talked about. One was you didn't speak about the spyglass, right? No, okay. So one was an audit by a company spyglass, right? So it basically is an audit that comes in and looks at the what we've been spending for our telecommunications. So it's specific to that. And the nice thing is that it gives us that information. And then they work on a contingency basis. So basically, if they find that we overpaid five thousand dollars, they would take fifty percent of that and then make suggestions as to, you know, where we can save in that. So I think that as we all know personally, right, what our cell phone bills are, right? They're high. You're kind of used to just spending this each month. So I commend you, Mr. Cruz, for, you know, bringing this this audit in to take a look because I think this would be a great way for us to save some money, hopefully. And what else? Just kind of a review again of the purchase orders to make sure that those procedures and protocols are running smoothly for the twenty three, twenty four school year. We are continuing as a district, the residency checks. So we're just committed to continuing that. And then the final thing is Mr. Cruz submitted for a FEMA fund reimbursement for stipends that were paid out to nurses and also for PPE equipment. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed that we will get that reimbursement because it would be the request was for about a hundred twenty thousand, which would be great. And then I think everything else you pretty much touched on.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on, we will go to public comment on agenda action items only. So anything that we are voting on, you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Voting on, you can come to the podium, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Seeing on, we will move on to. Discussion items for new business. Mrs. Razzella, you can.
Yes, I'd like to propose a new resolution. A resolution, find a student ineligible for attendance during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And to assess tuition. Whereas the district's administration applied for the removal of a student based upon the initial determination. That the student was ineligible for attendance in the district following an investigation into the student's domicile. And whereas the parents requested a hearing before the board regarding the student's eligibility. And whereas the board considered testimony and evidence related to the student's residency and domicile during the hearings. And it is hereby resolved on this twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three. That the board finds that the student has been ineligible for attendance in this district schools. For the duration of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And it is further resolved that the district assessed tuition for the cost of the student's program. During the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year and is further resolved. That the student be found eligible to attend the district schools during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Based upon domicile in Verona, beginning July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And it is further resolved, district officials are hereby authorized to take all steps necessary to officiate. Affect the terms of the resolution.
Need a motion to approve resolution?
I motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Ferrara. Can you call?
Yes, Mr. Walker? Yes. Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add something else on discussion items. Just, just like a, a general. Comment over a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Diarco. I was meeting with him about something separate and then. When he found out that I was a member of the board, we started to discuss shared services. So I initiated an email to Mr. Cruz. And Mr. Giuseppe and to Mr. Diarco outlining Jorge was kind enough to. Make a list of what our shared services are now, how we reciprocate and we're going to look forward to trying to get. That memorialized and formalized. So I'm looking forward to moving that ahead. And yeah, that was the only discussion item I wanted to add.
Anything else they want to comment on? We will move on to our resolutions. I need a motion to approve routine matters resolution number one.
You did.
We did, I know Jack, we did that one. Thank you. Motion for resolution number one.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
Me.
Mr. Walker. Mr. Cruz, please, any discussion?
Mr. Walker? Yes. Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I need a motion, please, to approve personnel resolutions number one through fourteen. Motion by Mr. Walker, seconded by Mrs. Razzella. Any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you please call the role?
Mr. Walker? Yes. Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
I think from number fourteen, but yes, from one through thirteen.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve education resolutions one through twenty-one. Motion by.
A motion.
Mr. Walker, seconded by.
Second.
Mrs. Freshy. Any discussions?
Okay, fair. For number eleven. The contract for the Jewish vocational service revocational assessments. I'm, what is that exactly?
You know what? This is for, and Mrs. Simmons is here, so she can correct me if I'm wrong, assessments for students wanting to go to vocational school.
Okay. So with this.
Diana, a wise person told me that just, just like the YMCA. This is, but you know, the religion part isn't.
Oh, no, I'm not asking because of that. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, yeah, no.
That was a question I was.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not asking because of that at all. Let me just, no, no, not at all. I'm more, I'm very interested in the vocational program and I saw that there were vocational assessments. And I've never heard of vocational assessments. And I was thinking that this was possibly.
Yeah.
Cause we've been talking about that at the eighth, at the younger level. And I was thinking, are we assessing our middle schoolers vocational? Like, please no more assessments. Yeah, no, I had nothing to do. Okay, no. Was no. So would this be students who are in life skills and then would be assessed to see what would be the best placement? Got it. Okay. All right. Great. Yeah.
I'm sorry, are, are Ms. Simmons' comments going to be able to be heard by the public?
I can repeat that.
Yeah.
Just in case they weren't. So it's, the service provides assessments for students. That are in the eighteen to twenty-one program to determine whether or not their baseline job skills. For placement into a program post-high school. Give me thumbs up. Okay.
I have one more. I'm sorry. So for number twenty-one, I know typically. Am I, go ahead. You want to take it? You go.
I mean, I'm looking at some of these classes and we're looking at classes that we're offering with two students, three students. Some of these classes are second semester classes, so.
So there is time to enroll kids into those.
I just don't know if we should be, I mean, is there time to approve them later in the year?
We can. Yeah, if there's still, so that's a great question. So I'm not sure. Whether or not this has been done here before. This is in your policy. It was in the policy when I got here. So, which is why it's on here. The high school staff did not remember anyone collecting this information from them in the past. But it's important because like, for instance, what, what we're talking about for those that don't have a. Agenda in front of you, our policy requires the board to approve courses that have elective courses. With fewer than ten enrolled. And the reason we say elective is because our special education classes often have fewer than ten because. Administrative code requires them to be below a certain size. AP government and politics, that's seven, AP Euro history, AP mechanics, they're all nearing ten. So AP Chinese is low at three. Fabrication design two at two. And then, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, yes, that's right. I was looking at the wrong column. Okay. And then you have a couple more that's at nine, which is CAD one, CAD two, two sections of CAD two. Now that one I put a note on there just so that you would know that we can't combine those into one section because it goes over the cap. Because of computer seats, there's only fifteen seats in that classroom. So that would need to be split. So that one probably often is around ten or lower. Color guard is historically been under ten here. It is only a marking period course and it does not, it's not requiring a second teacher. They, they cover that from within. Mrs. Neville actually covers that section. And concert choir is also. There's only, that's just, I'm sorry, that should go over to nine. Should be in the students enrolled column and full year and under term. Yeah, I'm sorry. And the same thing for in advanced acting and semester two. And so when I talked to Mrs. Ackerman about those semester two courses. Fabrication and design and advanced acting, she felt like there was enough time to withdraw ad to get kids into those classes. Obviously, the board has the opportunity to say, we don't want a course to run with two students in it. So that's, I will tell you that none of these sections are six period sections. Yeah, so we're not, we're not paying an extra, an extra stipend for have any of these taught. But we, it's, it's, it's a tough sell to run a course with two kids at the high school level or get that, which is why your policy says that you have to make that decision.
And I mean, and I don't know a whole lot about fabrication design, I'm going to pretend to know about that. But I do recall when I was in high school, I was in like a music theory class and I was in like music theory two or three. And there was a, a student with us who was in the next level up, who sat in our class, but did more advanced work. Is there the opportunity to maybe do fabrication and design one and two in the same classroom, but have the fabrication and design? Although I guess there's semester one and two.
It did, that, that was what I went right, because in my prior district, that's what we did. We come, so we had a six period stipend, which was a set amount. It was a base amount. And then we had a lower stipend to teach two curriculum within the same period. We don't have that in the contract here. That doesn't mean it couldn't be a sidebar if we had that in this case, because all of our electives, with the exception of some of our APs. Our semester courses instead of full year, they very often run in opposite semesters and can't be combined. But what we can do, I can go back and, and talk to Mrs. Ackerman to see if she can get a good feeling. Of the number of kids that may be displaced from another course that may not be running. And see if we can encourage kids to take these courses.
And if any of them maybe can even, I mean, do we have the option to run things as like an independent?
We have the option to run things as an independent study.
You know, maybe that is, I'm, I'm thinking maybe the Chinese language and culture, I, I. Cause there's only three students and if I recall, I mean, I might have only had two students actually take the exam last year.
It's, it runs low every year. I mean, for good reason, it's extremely difficult exam, as is the French AP. There is, there are other options though that we can look at. And I started talking to Mr. Cogdill and Mrs. Akron about, about that today. We do have some conflict when, anytime you have a small school. And singletons and you have a student that, and I'll give you an example from real life. We have students that want to be in the band and we have students that want to take. AP European, sorry, AP US history. They're both singletons and they're both running at the same time. Now the answer would be we'll move one of them. But then what happens is you just bump that problem to another group of kids that had another course in that other period. So in this case, this period one conflict that we have is. Precludes the fewest amount of students from being able to take both courses. So I made the suggestion, there is a very challenging online school called the virtual high school. We can do three different options there. We can pay out a pocket of four hundred and fifty dollars per student. They do offer all of the APs possible and a. Whole ton of really good electives. And what we found in my prior district is the students that were taking those APs were getting threes or better. It's a, it's a rigorous curriculum and it's. It's taught by classroom teachers that are certified. The second option is we could enroll up to twenty-nine students at two hundred and fifty dollars per course. As long as one of our teachers. Contracts to teach a virtual high school, high school course for them. It would be part of their five periods. That would be up to, up to thirty, really up to twenty-nine. But that's, that can be really up to almost sixty, because a lot of the courses are semester courses. So you get one for each semester.
Work is that? Does that happen during the school day?
It can work in two different ways. So some, some of our students would schedule a study hall and do it during study hall and you would have. A mentor here that would help them, you know, acclimate to online, everyone's acclimate to online work now, but. To a self-paced high school course. And there were some students that opted not to take a study course, a study hall and opted to do it as an extra. It's up to, it's really up to the family of how they want to handle that. Most of our kids probably would take a study hall if they're taking an AP, but I'm not going to make that blanket statement because we have a lot of high-powered kids that can handle.
Question.
Sure.
So I know when we do scheduling, we often look at the guidance counselors being someone that you're, would have a lot of insight to give to kids or parents. But for the special ed population, a lot of times the, the CST team, team members, you know, they're going to be needed in the process. How confident are we and what are we doing to ensure that the CST members in those meetings are able to give informative? Opinions and advice to the parents and the kids about all the options they have?
That's a good question and I'm not going to answer that as though I know exactly what's happening. I, I do know that we need to work. Mrs. Simmons is working with her CST, Mrs. Ackerman is working with her guidance count, her school counselors. To have a better understanding of what we offer and what we can provide to students across the board. Mrs. Simmons is new, Mrs. Ackerman is new, I'm new. But generally, our guided, our, our school counselors at the high school level and at the, at the middle school level, because there are some electives down there. Really need to not just meet with each other, but also meet with the content area supervisors to understand like, what is fabrication and design? Who would be interested in taking a fabrication and design course? How can we take that course that potentially, like a Chinese AP that potentially runs low every year and encourage? Kids that may have an aptitude for that to take that course. So those are conversations that really surround training our staff to be really well versed in our offerings for kids. So I didn't answer your question.
Is that something that we?
Theoretically.
I guess maybe with the next board meeting or the future board meetings, if you could tell us if, if you think that's a training that's needed and if so. When, when we can expect to see something like that.
Yeah, I can do that.
I thank you.
Sure.
To comment, I, I do have a child with IEP. I was like, anyone surprised by that? But during her meeting at high school, they did bring in the guidance counselor that was assigned to her. And we had a conversation about what her schedule would look like and what her options, what appropriate options there would be for her. So I do think there is some conversation. If it's wanted. But I just, you know, it's there. I think people just need to make sure they ask for it.
Yeah, there's really, there's no high school in New Jersey that does it perfectly and where all of our school counselors know all of the ins and outs of all of the courses. That are offered. But we offer a lot of great courses. We need to, we need to make sure our students know what's available to them at every level.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, can you please call rule for resolutions one through twenty-one?
Mr. Walker? Yes. Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions for athletics and co-curricular. The motion to approve resolutions one through seven. So moved, motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
A second.
Mr. Walker. Any discussions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions regarding resolutions one and two around the co-curricular. So. I, my questions are, so when I added them up, we're spending two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and change. On stipends for extracurriculars. So my question is, how are we tracking? Is there attendance taken? Do we know how many students? Is it hours? And how is this paid out to the teachers? Is it broken down in their? Regular paycheck or is it biannual or all at the end of the year in June? I just want a little deeper understanding of how that works.
So you want to talk about it's broke, it's the paid at the end of the school year. Everyone except for the high school.
Everyone except for the high.
They get two checks.
They get two, yes.
Yeah. And to answer your question, Mrs. Freski, I asked that very question myself this year. And the answer that I got was, well, we used to do, you know, we used to. Ask for a list of students, number of students, number of times we meet. I, I think I'm gonna, I think it fell off during the pandemic, like everything did and it never, it was not done this year. It wasn't done before the pandemic either. Okay. It will be done next year. I've already like put together a sample packet of what we're going to expect. For teachers that are.
Some of the principal would be the first person to sign off on that, right? That would, I would imagine that would be his or her responsibility per school.
Yes, it should, yes. And, and the bulk of our co-curricular are at the high school and middle school. Right? We have a couple of small ones at the elementary level. Um, our, you know, conflict resolution advisors, one book, one Verona. Um, but you know, in that we see, you can see. The fruits of what they're doing, whether or not, you know, a, a certain club is meeting often or not often, whether it has a good. Representation of our student body. I do know that, um, that Mr. Cogdill, um, has been looking at. Um, clubs that don't run. And has been saying, okay, well, you're not getting good attendance. It's not a formal thing.
How would, how would, how would he should know that?
Talking to the advisors, there's nothing. Yeah. And then what, what will happen is someone will apply for a new, um, you'll notice on this. I can tell you, um, for the high school positions. Uh, let's see. Black and Verona is newly stipended at $993.
And are these built into the, the, the contract?
They, this is a sidebar because they're, these were, uh, volunteer clubs that had not been paid.
Okay. So every, every club on this list is, it's, it's.
It's linked to CBA. Yes, well, either CBA or sidebar.
Okay. So if, if there was low attendance, we would just, we, we'd still have the option of saying, we're just gonna cut the club if we want. We're not staffing.
Right, we're not staffing. Um, and there are several that no longer run here, um, but there's several on here. So design club is one, Black and Verona is one. Um, history club is, uh, these are, most of the ones that are $993. Are new. So we knew those clubs that weren't running. So we reallocated funding from, from stipends from them. To the new clubs that were being run as volunteer clubs.
Get advertised each year? Cause this is, some of these are really nice stipends. So does it automatically go to the same teacher or does it get advertised?
Oh, no, they get, they're stipends. So they, they are, they are advertised every year. So the only one, for instance, that would, you know, be going to the same person would be like the athletic trainer because we only have one.
Obviously, yeah.
That was it. The rest are advertised. Do they go to the same people?
Well, probably, yeah. I have one.
But they are advertised.
I have one quick question. I'm sorry. Um, for number four and five. This is, um, for the use of facilities. Jorge, we had discussed the, um. I think it was level one, two, and three for payments. Did we ever? Come back to that or is that part of this?
Uh, so we, we never circle back to update.
And our facilities use regulation.
Right. So these are, these are the, the, um. Clubs or programs that are able to use, but then the tiers is a separate.
That's separate.
Matter.
Yeah, this has to do with, um, insurance.
Right.
So, so we'll definitely follow up on that to, at the next board meeting to revise that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to approve resolutions one through seven. Motion by Mrs. Ferrara, seconded by, oh, second, seconded by Mrs. Frisella. Uh, please call it all. I was just gonna say discussions, but we already did that. Sorry.
The discussions have been long tonight.
Yeah, it's, so I have, I have, uh, Freshy and, and. Yeah.
I did. Apparently.
Mr. Walker?
Never ask, uh, yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our finance resolutions, resolutions. One through 14. I need a motion to approve resolutions one through. Ten motion by Mrs. Ferrara, seconded by.
I'll take it.
Mr. Walker, any discussions on?
Just, just a quick question. Number 14, the Northern New Jersey, I'm gonna. Why? Oh, the Chinese school? That's a nonprofit, right? That's where they, uh, cause if I. I didn't see when I was looking in the, the materials, I didn't see that we're charging them anything for the use of the facility.
No, they get charged.
Oh, they do get charged.
They do, they pay rent.
Okay, okay, that's fine then. Thank you.
Just real quick, um, Mr. Cruz, on resolution number one, there's. Two different things for general athletics. One for 890 and one for 1 million?
Yes. So the, the one that's for June 30th is the end of the fiscal year. Because we never met, um, we didn't have a second board meeting or, uh, but technically it's, uh, June 30th. So. We ended up closing out the, the school year, June 30th and then, uh, July 25th is the start of the new.
For the new school, got it. Thank you.
And so those are payments that we're due now.
Mr. Cruz, if you please call roll.
Sure. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks.
You can skip it.
The motion to approve governance and policies, resolutions one through three. Um, move it. Motion by Mrs. Frisella.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Ferrara. Any discussion? No. Mr. Cruz, can you please call roll?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you.
So, uh, let me just ask a quick question. So because there was none for facilities, that's why that just got skipped.
There's no motions. We, I'll have, um, I think I would take it off next time.
Yeah, okay, just.
It was a placeholder in case you were adding anything and then it just.
Got it.
And we do have an addendum this evening.
So, uh, we have an addendum resolution. So I need a motion for personnel to approve. Resolution one. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
Me.
Mr. Walker, any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you please call roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. On the addendum resolutions I have, I, for education, need a motion to approve resolutions one through three. So moved, motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
A second.
Mrs. Ferrar, any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last one is finance. Um, I need a motion to approve finance resolutions one through three. So moved, motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by. Second, Mrs. Ferrar, any discussion?
That's a quick question about number three, the 457D plan. Is there any cost to the district for that? Is that just purely?
No, no, yeah, no cost to the, no, no cost to the board. So there's no, the only, uh, cost to the board is basically additional. Paperwork we have to, in my office has to do. Uh, but the, the fees that on the compliance side is all, um, paid by the investment provider, the, the. Basically the plant providers for these plants.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're gonna open the podium up for public comments on any items. You have three minutes at the podium. Please just state your name and address. Is your mic, is the green? Press it, sorry.
Um, I have statements, um, that are related to what I'm going to speak about. Um, like I have a statement from my son and, um, I believe eight other students in this classroom at HBW. So I was wondering if I could hand these out to everyone because I don't know that you've seen these.
You can hand them out and then after just, please just state your name and address.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my name is Jen Russo. My address is Seven Howard Street. Tonight I'm here to express serious concerns about an incident involving my fifth grade son at HBW Middle School. On May 4th, my son was attempting to help his teacher pull down a screen projector in the classroom. In his own words, I was trying to help her because she asked us to help. She grabbed my forearm with a tight grip and threw me to the ground. She told me to sit down. I don't think it was an accident and I haven't had a problem prior. Sometimes she just tells me to get up aggressively. I don't really feel safe because I don't know when I'm going to get pulled or grabbed. Today I did not feel safe and I really wanted to get out of there. I received a call. Okay, now I'm talking. I received a call from the principal informing me of what my son had reported to the guidance counselor. I was told that the teacher would be out of the room pending an investigation and that the school would appreciate if we did not talk about this with anyone. The administrators contacted our superintendent, our school attorney, the institutional abuse unit of DCPP. Eight other students were interviewed over the course of two days in both guidance and the principal's office. Not one of those parents received a call. I was not informed that Jake was re-interviewed the next day in the principal's office. The following day, a teacher pulled my son aside and asked what had happened on Thursday. She then told him students will receive detention if they spoke about the incident. Two state, two students who gave witness statements took this to mean that they could not even speak. About this to their parents. These are 10 and 11-year-old children. They are speaking up about something that's wrong. The following week, two administrators explained that their goal was to build back Jake's trust so he could coexist with this teacher. Jake did absolutely nothing wrong. As a school counselor, my goal is to help create a safe space for children. I cannot fathom ever putting my hands on a child, a student. As a mother, I send my son to school with the expectation that he will be safe, happy, and he will learn and thrive. One week later, this teacher, after admitting to my husband and me. That she did in fact grab Jake in an effort to steer him, to put him back in his seat. She realized that she must have grabbed him tightly because he fell to the ground. She admitted that. I asked her why she didn't apologize if it was a mistake. She said she was frazzled. Jake and the other boys did not return to class. Our children were not comfortable with her. I don't trust her and some of them were scared of receiving detention. There was no explanation given to the other students in the class. She just. Returned to the class to teach. Jake spent the remainder of the year in the library. We rearranged, we rearranged his schedule so she could return. Quite honestly, I don't know if I can even say Jake was educationally punished because the majority of his class time was spent on a Duolingo app to learn French. According to HIV policy in the state of New Jersey, a safe, positive and engaging environment is necessary for students to learn. I was informed that the HIV I filed was unfounded. Her aggression toward Jake has and continues to be called a mistake. This was not an isolated incident as the witness reports in front of you show that several other boys stated they don't feel safe. She grabs me, she pulls me. I thought French was going to be enjoyable, but I don't feel comfortable. She. I was told that grabbing arms, yanking a student's chair from under him and pulling a child across the room by his hood in an effort. To get him in another seat. Is seen as behavior management. Jake witnessed all of these events. The lack of response, communication, leadership and empathy from HBW has been disheartening and disgraceful. Our middle school has failed on so many levels. I'm concerned about the message that's being sent to students. Parents have told their children to be careful around this teacher. I do appreciate. Several of you who have been very supportive and empathetic. But as I have been saying since May, our family is not satisfied with this outcome. Attending responsive classroom workshops. Not receiving tenure and a, and not receiving your salary increase are not an appropriate way to resolve a pattern of misconduct. And in our opinion, a single incident is not acceptable. My son continues to ask why this teacher continues to teach. And he feels that that one time was just not okay. Teachers should not put their hands on students. Our children deserve better. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Russo. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to?
Hi, my name is Megan Walsh and I live at 95 Fairway Avenue. Um, I have three girls in the district. Uh, my oldest is going to be a junior next year. And she is one of the students that's impacted. The superintendent mentioned. Um, that she will have to choose between taking marching band. Um, which is her sport, which is her community, um, and such an important part of her life. Um, or she can take, um, AP US history. And as a parent, I just want to say I'm very frustrated that she's put in this position and. I will be having conversations, um, going forward, but since some solutions were brought up, I just want to kind of react and. I also wanted to, I also more frustrated knowing that they're passing classes with two students of kind of. Electives that are not core curriculum. Um, for those of you that are not aware, um, US history two is a course that all juniors have to take. Um, US history split into two years for New Jersey. Um, so she took US one last year. She'll take US two this year and the hope was that she would have an opportunity to take the AP exam. Um, the US history AP exam is the second most popular AP exam taken by students across the country. And, you know, schools look at your schedule. They look at what you take. And so my daughter, you know, she is a really, um, highly, um, competitive student. We're really proud of her. To be honest, a lot of the marching band students are, which is why I find it really. Strange that they would put them in this situation. Um, just this past year, we had marching band graduates go to Princeton, go to Columbia. Uh, two years ago, the Valley Victorian was in the marching band, went to Notre Dame. Um, so, you know, it's going to impact my child and I'm just. Find it frustrating that the school would have them choose. I also just want to clarify that it affects more than two children and that's what guidance is kind of also given us a response like, oh. It kind of stinks for you and your child, but. There's more than two kids impacted. There's at least five. So to hear too, that there's other classes being run with maybe two, three students. This, I, you know, I don't understand where some of the data is coming from, but, um. I just feel like it's, um, kind of just a strange position to put. Our kids in and I just really hope that it's not something, a pattern that continues. Um, unfortunately, the marching band due to COVID, um, is a little smaller this year. And they lost a really beloved teacher and it was because they said of numbers and. They're really encouraging, all right, we have to grow your numbers. You have to grow your numbers. But when you're putting kids in this situation. Where you have to choose between one or the other. You know, again, that doesn't really, to me, that's like not setting the band up for success and the music department. Um, as the superintendent mentioned, my kids run the musical. Music is so important to my family and I'm so grateful to be in a district that values music or I hope it continues to value music. Um, from the elementary school level up, it's just amazing. As I said, it's my daughter's community. Um, if anyone had an opportunity to attend, um. The music, senior music banquet, you have these underclassmen giving speeches about the seniors and just saying like how. They just, you know, looked up to these upperclassmen. It's not, it's, you know, it's not just, again, it's like your team. It's a part of. Who you are, it's your social network and also too, they're creating, create like amazing music. So. It's not the kind of subject where you can just take a year off, like you, you know, you have to continue in order to succeed. Um, you know, it was brought to our attention that there were, you know, there's always going to be conflicts and I recognize that and I'm not someone that likes to come up here and complain, but. I just feel like, I'm just confused why they would put them in this situation and I'm seeing. Some patterns of like kind of undermining of the program and I just want to make sure that my student, my daughter is not kind of caught up in that. Um, so I just want to make, you know, just, I'm hoping that a. So I just want to make, you know, just, I'm hoping that a solution can be reached. I'm reaching out just to kind of make you aware of that, and hoping that our guidance can maybe be more flexible and maybe more understanding too. Because like I said, the response I got, I was very kind of surprised about how curt and kind of like, well, sorry. You know, I really think that, you know, there are so many great teachers, and there are so many great people here. I think we can come up with like creative solutions. You know, I did hear, you know, the solution that was offered. You know, I mean, I don't want to have like PTSD to online learning, but, you know, again, I think, I just hope that we can come up with a good solution. And I, I don't like the position that I feel like my daughter was put in, and I, I just don't think it makes sense for the school, like I said, because you have so many of these high achieving kids, like why would you make them make that choice? So I just hope that the school continues to be super supportive of our music programs, in particular, our band, our choirs. Like I said, I'm so grateful, it's such a part of Verona. We're so blessed to have both great sports and great music, and I just hope that we will continue to be supportive of those kids and of those programs. So thank you, and thank you to all our board members, because I appreciate all your time and energy, because I know it's a lot, so, thank you.
Question for the super, thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this, I know you're not the high school principal, but is this a conflict, a specific one between the history and the, the marching band? Is that unique to this upcoming year's schedule, or is that something that?
You know, that's a good question.
Between those two exact classes in the past?
I, I actually don't know.
You have some insight you can give us?
So I reached out to the former, is it okay that I came back up? Like dragged out with a stick. So there have been, I, what I've heard is that one student has been inflicted, impacted by a conflict in the past, but it has not been, it has not been a core class such as US history, which all juniors have to take. Again, second highest AP class, a yardstick for many schools. You know, they're gonna look at her resume, be like, why didn't she do that?
So, just to make sure we understand each other completely, it's something that it, it, it looks like it hasn't been this specific class versus it's just been a marching band thing in the past. So I guess something must have happened to cause.
Well, when Mrs. Ackerman, and again, I found out about this this morning, I spoke to Mrs. Ackerman right away. Mr. Cogdill was out today, but I did correspond with the email. This is her first time creating a high school schedule here.
Very good, okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I mean, and she has nothing, I mean, nothing but praise about our music program, so I don't think this was deliberate in any way. I think in looking at when you have singletons among students that are taking a lot of singletons, many of our kids that take AP history also take other AP courses, and trying to place them so that you're not closing kids out, and in what she said to me, now you said five, she said two, I, I didn't look at the list myself.
Yeah. And that to me was, like, we tried to, because we've been communicating with her, and like, we tried to navigate, like, where's this number coming from? Because within 15 minutes of having a conversation, we identified at least five students, maybe six. And again, like, to be honest, like, my high schooler, like, I kept saying, check your schedule, check your schedule. They may not even have real, so maybe they're not being squeaky wheels yet, but it is going to impact at least five students, which is more students than some of these classes that you just approved, so just saying.
But you know what, those, the, whether or not we prove those classes don't have any impact on whether that?
But I think it did make me realize, wow, you could have a class with five kids if these five kids are affected. But I mean, I think there's probably other solutions too. I just wanted to.
There's actually several solutions we're looking at.
And thank you, thank you for bringing this, bringing this up.
No, and I appreciate it, thank you.
So I don't, I think that there's several solutions that we can look at. If there are more than two kids, the reason she put it in this period, because in, in her list, that were the fewest number of kids that were affected by crossover. If it's five or six kids, then we'll take a look at moving the course, or making a, trying to figure it out.
Cool, good luck.
Yeah.
Is anyone else like to come up and speak? So our next scheduled public meeting will be held on August 29th, 2023, which will have a confidential session starting at 6:00 PM, followed by public session at 7:00 PM in the Verona High School Learning Commons. It is 8:43, and I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Frisella, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.